Yeah. I think, I think that becomes just a workflow issue because getting it through workflow. But, but I've asked surely.
Is it?
Surely.
Are you sure?
I've asked.
I don't want to get kicked out of, I don't want to get kicked out of the club. I'm already paying for my own car wash on my city car, you know, that's a felony mistake. I got the, I bought the monthly pay. I know I get the, I know I get. Like if the state police cars find out about that, I'm gonna kick all the 12. It's a city car, you can't do that.
I use city water.
They'd rather run out of gas. They'd rather run out of gas in their police cars than to put in $2 for themselves.
No, I'm, I'm with you. I don't know what thing Chris Wagner said to me, I said, well, you know, I'd love to have a car wash at every corner. We need that water, we need that water now. Let's do it. Yeah.
There you go.
We need it for real, that one somebody missed out here in the information, we gotta do a $23,000 write down.
Wasn't that something?
They put that, they put that car wash right there at the.
Yeah, that was the old work fit.
Well, it still works.
It is, but they.
Was the old wishing.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are going to call the Finance Committee to order. I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll.
Sure. Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Vice President Lupien?
Here.
President Melendez?
Here.
Thank you.
And let the record note, we're joined by all of our other council members, save Councilmember Harris, who is out of town today. We're gonna start with introductory number 189, authorizing an agreement related to the 2022 Rochester Fringe Festival. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I do want to just add here, before we take it to a vote, that I appreciate the answer we got from Gender Review, and I just want to be a broken record on this. I really look forward to being able to work with Communications on understanding a little bit more about the funding formula, to some of the points that my colleagues made in the budget hearing, finding a way to, to think about how equity plays a role in all of this. So, the data is there, it's clear, and we have some, some work to do next year. But we have a motion and a second for this, so I will move to a vote. All those in favor of introductory number 189, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Oh, I don't need to let the clerk repeat after me now, right?
Yeah, we don't have to do that anymore.
Wow. See if my muscle memory will remember that. Introductory number 190, authorizing an agreement relating to the 2022 Rock Holiday Village. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 191, authorizing an agreement related to medical services for non-uniformed employees. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 192, authorizing an agreement related to Unemployment Claims Administration. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 193, authorizing competitive grant applications. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will just insert a comment here. Appreciate knowing that the CFA applications are due in July. This has been, Mayor Evans, this has been a little bit of a, of a bone of contention for me over the last four years is not, I understand that the merit of us kind of giving a blanket approval to go after some dollars, I think that makes a lot of sense, but would very much like to make sure that when CFA proposals are completed, that council is either given a work session, or just frankly, not everything has to be a work session, an email will do, but I think it's important for us to know what the city is applying for.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, it's been moved and seconded, 193, so I will move it to a vote. All those in favor of 193, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 194, authorizing a master license agreement with Frontier Telephone of Rochester Incorporated. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
Well, I had one. So, this, this seems like really welcome news. I believe we, uh, when was it? We, we passed the telecommunications ordinance probably in 2018, and if I'm correct, Mayor Evans, Commissioner Perrin, this is probably the first time that we've seen a master license agreement of this size come through. So, just wondering if someone can give us an update on where we are. I'm sure there's some things that we can't really talk about yet because they're being dealt with by lawyers, but I'd like to know what we can know.
Well, I, I just think that, and I'll let the Commissioner weigh in, because I was chair of Parks and Public Works.
You sure were.
When we actually passed this legislation, as you know, um, let's just say it wasn't popular when we passed it, but necessary, because I, I believe that the city should be treated the way anyone else, um, are across the country as relates to our right-of-way, right? We should be compensated when people are using them. So, it's, it's, it's an issue that we continue to work on, continue to try to do collaboratively, and when we can't do things collaboratively, obviously, sometimes goes to litigation.
Is it a sense that this is the first of multiple agreements coming through soon?
Perrin, you wanna, you wanna say if others, others will be on its way?
All right, I think that's there. Yeah, we have not had an enforceable agreement with Frontier or any of its predecessors for over a century, so this is, this is the one that's gonna put this in place. Um, I think it's really important just to note that we're looking at this as being able to build a state of, our telecommunications systems, not just for businesses, but our citizens. This is an absolutely critical piece of infrastructure. Not just now, it has been for, for quite a while. Um, Telecommunications Act of 1996 really started this off. Before we get into some of that, I do want to make sure that we are looking at fair assessment and assignment of that full cost of installation, maintenance, and repair. We want to make sure that these things are done in a manner that doesn't create visual pollution, we don't want unsightly, um, you know, it, it's great to have this, but let's have it the right way, is what I guess I'm getting at. We don't want to have things that, that make our city from an aesthetic or a, a urban design standpoint not look as, as it should. Um, in terms of the, we have more than a dozen telecom providers, um, we're looking at it, obviously, green light and some of the other ones are newer, so we're gonna have to look into this. There's more than 350 miles of assets. Um, and really, a lot of the, the intense lobbying came from a Trump administration, FCC, Federal Communications Commission dictate really in, in 2018, so, um, no, we're gonna be, we're gonna be doing this as a result of the lawsuit that occurred with Verizon and some others, so, no, well, I, I believe we're gonna be looking for these, these master license agreements to ensure that we're, we're receiving, you know, fair remuneration for what we're, for basically, for us providing the space for them to operate, which, which is only fair. It's, it's city space, we should be compensated for it.
Yeah. Well, kudos to, to this administration, to our previous administration for getting the ball rolling here. I know this is something, this has been a, a passion of Louie's for a while, I see Louie back there, so kudo, kudos to everyone for working on this. I, I just want to ask, $700,000 is, it looks like that's an estimate. When, when will we have a sense of what the full budgetary impact is?
You know, I'll actually defer to Louie on that, because there's a lot that goes into how we figured it out. Louie, do you mind jumping in on that one, please?
As the Commissioner stated, we have approximately 300 miles of facilities in the right-of-way. If you remember from the ordinance, uh, the fees are derived based upon how much facility there is in the right-of-way, and the average on these large providers is about 50 cents per foot. According to the records that have been provided to us by Frontier, they have approximately 1.5 million feet. So, that's what we can ascertain at this point in time. But much of their facilities were, were placed in the right-of-way well before anybody in this room was even working at the city. So, much of it has to be based upon their accurate assessment of their maps. We have maps that go back 50, 60, 100 years. We've now turned that over to a GIS database, and we require all of the providers to provide us with their as-built maps, and those maps are assessed. So, 700,000 is probably a very good estimate, but we really just don't have the manpower for everybody to go out with round penetrating radar and say, oh yeah, there's 10 feet there. We have to rely on a certain level of accuracy provided from their records that go back 50, 70, 100 years.
Got it. Thank you very much, and thanks for all the work on this. I guess I would just add, from, since we're gonna be talking about budget shortly, this could have a really significant impact on, on our revenue for the, for the city, and I just want to know, as we think about this as in estimate form, if we can just have a check-in maybe during the, maybe halfway through the year, something like that, to get a sense of how this is moving forward.
In the words of Rihanna, these companies better have our money, as well. Um, they're gonna pay us what they owe us, and we're gonna do what we can to, to, to recoup it for sure.
I need to clarify something I just said, not, not clarify, but just to add along. We must be cognizant that based upon the federal ruling, that the revenue received has to be directly related to the activities that are required to manage the resource. So, it's not unrestricted aid, so we, we have to make sure that we bear that in mind.
Fair enough.
That's part of the parent loss, part of the lawsuit.
I, it's, restricted money is still money, and we'd be very happy to get that in and be able to do some work that I'm sure the DES team and Commissioner Perrin are thrilled about doing. So, kudos to everyone. Um, I think we already got a motion and a second on 194, so I'll move it, unless anyone else has any comments or questions. I'll move it to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 195, authorizing the deferral of, of an annual loan repayment for the Rochester Convention Center Management Corporation. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, um, I just have to recuse myself, I'm a board member for the Convention Center.
Any further questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved? May I have a second? Councilmember Smith? Vice President Lupien?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 196, a resolution declaring June 19th as Juneteenth and endorsing its establishment as an official paid holiday of the City of Rochester. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
I, I think this is great, great step in the right direction. Um, you know, obviously, this has to be collectively bargained with, with the mayor and administration, but as a council, we adamantly and want to see this move forward, so we're excited.
Absolutely. With that, I will take a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can just say, we are gonna have the City Hall's first-ever Juneteenth block party on, what date is that, Barbara? June 20th. I'm shutting down all the streets around City Hall, DJ, food trucks, music, et cetera, et cetera. We're gonna celebrate Juneteenth in a, in a, in a big way on the block around, around City Hall, so more to come on that, but.
So, that, that's our invitation?
That's true.
Thank you.
But more coming on that, so we're excited about, about, about Juneteenth and recognizing it.
That's wonderful.
So, thank you for this resolution as well.
Absolutely. That's very exciting stuff. I will move to introductory number 197, a resolution declaring the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, but before we take a vote there, I'm gonna make a motion to amend, changing the legislation from a resolution to an ordinance. Can I have a motion on, can I have a motion to amend?
It's been moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The amendment passes, so now let's go to the resolution as amended, or shall I say the ordinance as amended? Any questions, comments, or concerns?
This has been a long time coming, and I'm glad to see it finally going through.
Absolutely, and I will, I'll say, last year, we had the first piece of indigenous art put downtown on the Convention Center, and every day I drive by it, and it's something that still makes me feel like we're moving in the right direction, and this is only an indication of, of more of that, and I hope we get more indigenous art and more, more things downtown to celebrate the, the indigenous heritage of this, of this region. Uh, any further questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Martin?
So, well, let me let you finish, but it's in relation to intro 196 and why that isn't also being made an ordinance?
You can ask that question now.
Yeah. So, yeah, why isn't 196 also an ordinance?
Yeah, please.
I, I can take that on first, and if there's additional questions after that. The difference would be mainly that this needs to be collectively bargained, the Juneteenth holiday, um, as part of negotiations with labor unions of the city, and, um, you know, the intention, I think, is that everyone wants to see this happen, um, and hopefully, hopefully it does.
Yeah, we're, so, we're working on it.
Cool. Thank you, and I fully support 197 and the ordinance and all of that, just came to mind. Thank you.
Did we already get a motion and a second on ordinance as amended?
Not as amended, no.
Can I, can I get a motion then? It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 218, amending the 2021-22 budget by appropriating unanticipated revenues to the operating budgets of the Police Department and Fire Department. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question.
By all means.
So, the, in the transmittal, it says the City Charter, Section 616 prohibits expenditures in excess of appropriation at the departmental level, but it seems like this happens still, so how, how is that able to, um, to transpire?
Let me have Budget take that, and then if Legal has anything to add on that.
Uh, it has not overrun the budget at this point, but it will ultimately once the final couple payrolls are processed.
So, this is to prevent that from?
Correct. Yep, this is our projection.
So, when, because one of the things, you know, I, I've been thinking about when we wrote on the police budget is, it doesn't matter what number we give them, because they're gonna end up spending it in overtime anyways, and so, are there points that, before they overrun it, that we're putting legislation through to amend the budget so that they don't? Is that how that works?
Correct. We typically, at the year-end amendment, do not budget additional revenues, so we could have, if you had thought about it, we could have waited until year-end to change this, but our auditors typically have a problem if we see the projection, and it looks like they're going to go over that we correct that before it happens.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense. Thank you.
Any further, any further questions?
I have a question.
Please.
So, it was asked by Councilmember Martin if the two could be separated, the RPD from the RFD, and it said they should not be separated, but not that they could not be separated. So, can you talk a little bit about why they cannot be separated?
The administration would not separate it? It's addressing an issue that is present in both budgets, so we're addressing it with the same council transmittal, and, and processing, processing it as one budget amendment.
I'd like to ask about overtime generally. This has been something that I've been talking about for four years now, that overtime costs specifically for police departments across the country have been really detrimental to city budgets, and we're certainly in a different place right now than we've been in years past, in part because of total numbers of members on the force, et cetera, and I'm sure there's some different realities, but to be perfectly frank, the last administration and the last chief talked about really wanting to work on this, but we never really had any kind of clarity as to how it was being done, and there wasn't all that much results. So, I'd, I'd like to know, Mayor Evans, I think I saw Chief Smith somewhere, there he is, um, just for an understanding of what we are going to do specifically right now to keep this number at bay.
Well, I think one of the biggest things we have to do, and I, and I can't go into details with a lot of it, um, because a lot of it relates to collective bargaining, is working to make sure that we negotiate this through our negotiating process. We are in the process of, of having negotiations as it relates to the police contract. It's important for us to be, to be able to deploy our resources in a way that will allow us to reduce overtime when possible, um, but it, but it also is important to note, as you all know, that we are also down in officer numbers, which does, which, which does increase overtime, because we have to make sure that we cover those shifts. Chief, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, add on that? Or if I covered it, and we got hit the point?
So, in some of the areas, we have had reductions. We've shown reductions across the board in completing assignment overtime by monitoring it, and completing assignment is overtime that we spend letting officers stay at the, at the end of their shifts, or staying late. We've also seen reductions in... Hang on, there was another one. We also saw a reduction in callback overtime. Now, a big part of that decrease was because, obviously, we haven't been calling everyone in for protests. We're anticipating if this trend continues, we're also not going to be spending the protest overtime that was previously spent, and even if we do have events, our responses have been scaled down a great deal compared to what they were, so you should be seeing less overtime there. As far as on a daily staffing level, I do get a daily report, you know, the purpose of a daily report is obviously, so I see it daily. You know, when we were in the COVID months, and as I spoke in the other hearings, we were looking at some days having 16, 17, eight-hour blocks. Yesterday's daily staffing report, for example, shows me we were only short six slots in patrol, six eight-hour slots, so that's a difference of about 12, and part of that is because as we're allowed, as much as we've been allowed by contract, we have changed some officers' work hours. Different officers assigned to different units, depending on their assignment, there's different rules about where I can move them around and what I can do. So, we've been looking at trying to work smarter, not harder, with the, the folks that we can move around. So, between that and the reduction in COVID and the administrative side, particularly Commander LaFave, although he's not here, I have to give him credit, has worked very hard at improving our show rate. So, our show rate is the number of people that are, actually show up for work, and our number of people that have been out on sick, disability, so on, really was quite high. He's done a great job working with medical staff and getting a lot of these folks back to work that, you know, had, had quite frankly fallen through the cracks, should have been back to work, and we hadn't been monitoring them. So, our show rate has improved greatly, we're continuing to work on that. I, I expect to see further improvements in our show rate, and then, obviously, with hiring, we're also hoping to see a reduction. So, if, if it weren't for just the overwhelming patrol shortage, I think the systems we have in place will show a reduction in time, and with our hiring practices. We have 100 people signed up for the test in the fall already. Our goal is to have 1,000 people signed up to hopefully make some significant dent in our manpower shortages. We are still looking at a class of about eight laterals, starting in July, and the 22 we have in the academy now should be done in 10 weeks in and out on the road, and that's 22 officers on the road.
I just want to poke a little bit at one of, one of the things that you said, there's, you said, and I think this is what Mayor Evans was referring to too, that there are different rules that dictate how you can and cannot tell people where to go. That, you're talking about rules, you're talking specifically about the bargaining agreement with the Locust Club, is that correct?
That's correct. So, most members cannot have their hours of assignment changed, uh, their reporting times cannot be changed, their area of assignment cannot be changed. So, if they're assigned in one section, I, I can't move them to another section on a temporary basis. So, Genesee section, for example, may have two officers over, Lake section may be two officers short, I can't take those two Genesee officers and put them in Lake section for the day.
And I'll, uh, I don't want to, I don't want to take, take up too much time talking about this, but I just want your opinion about something, and yours as well, Mayor Evans. Last year, uh, one of my favorite subjects, as, as a lot of you know, is, is our chicken permits, and I very much tried to get the city to reduce the cost of the chicken permits in part by no longer having RPD do the coop inspections, and instead having someone from Animal Services, and I was told at the time by the past administration that that was something that the Locust Club would not give up. So, if there are things that potentially make more sense for a different department to do, and we have police officers who are actively saying they are working a lot of hours, we're short-staffed, but if there are things that is in their contract to do, we, we do not have the latitude to take that away from them, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, we, we are, I mean, I'd have to remind people of this again, and I, I, I'm in favor of collective bargaining, we have several unions here, I've, I've got a lot of experience with this from the school district. It's important for the public to understand, and everyone in this room to understand, that, that we have to negotiate a, a lot of things, and we just voted on this, you know, the Juneteenth thing is, is an example of that. We don't, we can't do things by fiat or because the mayor or the police chief wants to do them. There are a lot of things that we have to negotiate with, be it not just the police union, but the fire union, ASME, um, the, the operating engineers, and, and that, that's the world we live in. I'm a big supporter of labor, um, you know, and, and that's, so you're correct. We, we have to negotiate some things that to some people may seem, hey, why do you gotta do that? You just can't do it. We have to negotiate those things.
Well, I can't stress this enough, whatever support the administration needs from council in those negotiations, I can't speak for the rest of my colleagues, but I can say from me personally, I think overtime is a, a huge concern, not just financially, it doesn't help the community, and it certainly doesn't help the officers to be working 90, 100 hours a week. So, if there are things that we can do, and if we can get that contract negotiated so there is some more latitude, and so that the things that the police officers do not need to be doing, like inspecting chicken coops, can no longer be done by police officers, that would be something that I think would be very beneficial to, to everyone, frankly. that would be something that I think would be very beneficial to everyone, frankly. Any, any further questions on 218? Councilmember Martin?
Yes. Is there a reason why council leadership or even the finance chair isn't involved in these contract negotiations? I do know that that's something that council has expressed an interest in, being at the table to represent the interests of council, so.
Yeah, the only, the only reason why is because it's an executive branch prerogative. That's, that's the only reason why. But obviously, any smart mayor takes council's priorities and bring, and bring those to the table as you think about negotiations. But it's just the, the executive branch is charged with, invested, in, in, in charge with negotiating contracts. That's, that's the only reason why.
Any further questions on 218?
Yeah. Trying to understand, you know, things, things are shifting, and they look a little bit different than they did maybe the last time that the structure of the police department was studied, which I think was in 2015, if I'm not mistaken. What plans do we have to, to kind of look at how the police department is utilizing employees? You know, I know that they're doing an experiment with two officers to a car. How does that impact things? You know, because I think that would be really helpful, and taking into consideration, what are the things that police officers don't need to do, that we can offload to other, other folks to take some of the load off? What are we doing in that area?
I, I think, Chief, the, the one study we talked about, that we talked about doing, you may want to comment on, comment on that. But again, we're, we're looking at a lot of things from negotiation standpoint. That's a, that's a priority for us. There are things that, that we like to discuss at, at the negotiating table.
Yeah, I would imagine that the report might inform that as well.
Yep, exactly. And, but Chief, I don't know if you want to comment on this as well?
Yeah, I, long-term, whoever sits in this seat definitely needs to get a manpower and workload study, you know, underway for the department. One hasn't been done for 2015, since 2015. And take a fresh look, I mean, we all know things change. The Central Business District, for example, I can tell you, the permanent population downtown has almost doubled since 2015, you know, and we're dealing with the vertical neighborhoods now, and much more folks living in the Central Business District. And then, obviously, you know, the violence and things that we're facing. So that definitely needs to be done. In the short term, you know, I've, I've been working on trying to get some things over to 311. You know, one thing that, again, not my department, but there is a parking bureau already that, if it were larger, might have the ability to take some of the parking workload off the police department.
And so the manpower study is something that is, is a priority for me and will be going forward, as well as, you know, we've talked about this, and council has talked about this, alternative response type models. But again, and I keep stressing this, a lot of this has to be negotiated.
Right.
And it's important to stress that, because sometimes we can give the public false hope when we, when we stand up and say, oh, we can just get in here and we can do whatever we want. But there's realities of state law in working with the system to affect the changes that you want to see, and so part of it is the negotiation standpoint. And for the things that we are able to do that are outside of that, that are in the management bucket that we can do without those things, we pursue those things very vigorously, particularly if, if it affects the bottom line, but does not hurt public safety. So we have to take this from a, a multi-level approach, not just try one thing, but try multiple things, and then, and then try to have success that way.
Yeah, you know, alternate response, the, the price tag might look big at the, you know, when you're starting out, but really, when you think about if it can reduce overtime, we're really, you know, saving in the end. And I think that's important, that we focus in that area for multiple reasons. Thank you.
One last question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Can you tell me how much you all went over budget and overtime last year, and also the projected amount for this year?
Budget folks, you got that number?
We do, yep. So the overage on overtime is projected at $5.4 million, offset by $3.2 million in underspending on the wages line.
And that's for, and how about for last year, I guess, the last budget cycle?
Yeah, we'd have to, we'll, we'll look that up and get back to you very quickly.
Thank you.
So, so, so you see, so the police department budget was actually under budget by 3.2 million, but over, the overtime cost, you know, is what, is what made it, is what caused it to be able to go over by that amount that we, that. And I don't know if you want that for fire, we can also get to that for fire as well.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to see all those numbers. And I think it'd be very good for us to continue to benchmark these things, and also continue to make it clear that this is not, no matter what the Locust Club may say, this is not benefiting the citizens of Rochester right now. We need, we need to continue to move forward that way. If there's no further questions on 218, I will ask for a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Introductory number 219, pardon me, I will be holding introductory numbers 219 through 228 related to the 2022-23 proposed budget until Tuesday's council meeting. I appreciate, we've gotten a lot of responses from budget thus far on, on some of the outstanding questions. There are a few left, some things that were fairly, that we really wanted to see before any votes are taken, so hope we can get those in the next 24, 48 hours. And obviously, we'll also have a public hearing today after the meeting. So we will hold those and bring them all out on Tuesday night at the full council meeting.
Councilmember Gruber, on 225, I just want to note that we will have a motion to amend. You can save that for Tuesday, but I just want to make sure.
Yep, we'll amend that on, on Tuesday. So finally, we will close out with introductory number 229, authorizing an agreement related to mental health first aid training. I want to thank my council colleagues and the administration for moving forward on this. I just want to note, this is really about trying to make sure that we can use some of the city council dollars related to the race commission to help frontline workers across different departments in the administration get mental health first aid training. So very, very hopeful that as soon as we have a contract underway, that we can find a way to work cross-departmentally. Frontline workers, as you all know, because you're them, are in every department in this city. Library, code enforcement, rec centers, obviously. So Mayor Evans, can you, can you give me a sense of who might be running point on that for us, so that we can make sure that we have?
Yeah, Jose and Reeves is helping to coordinate this, but any of the training stuff goes through HR. So we, we're working internally from a management perspective on the folks that will be going through that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council on 229? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
Second.
So move in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And with that, that concludes the work of the Finance Committee. I do want to say it's nice to be back in person. Good to see everyone. Thank you to all of our special guests, and that closes the Finance Committee.
At this time, I call the Neighborhood and Business Development Committee to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice President Lupien.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Good to see you all again in person. It's been so long. Introductory number 198, authorizing sale of real estate. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Seeing none, need a motion in a second. We got to move it.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember, oh, I don't have to do that anymore. All right. And so now we vote. All in favor of the introductory, please say aye. Aye. All opposed to the introductory, please say nay. Introductory passes. I'm still, part of my head is still like the, wait for the clerk to do her thing. Introductory number 199, approving appointments to the City Planning Commission. Questions, comments, or concerns on this one? We had some questions earlier. I believe, looks as though everyone's questions have been answered sufficiently. So we need a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All right. And now we vote. All in favor of the introductory, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. Introductory number 200, approving appointment to the Rochester Environmental Commission. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, need a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All right. And now we vote. All in favor of the introductory, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. Introductory number 201, before we do anything with this, we need to amend the item correcting the affiliation of Victor Sanchez. So I need a motion to amend.
Come on.
Second.
All right. And now we vote on the, on amending the item. All in favor of amending the item, please say aye. Aye. All opposed to amending the item, please say nay. The amendment passes. And now we vote on the item as amended. All, I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
All right. And now we vote on the item as amended. All in favor of the item as amended, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. Introductory number 202, approving appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All right. And now we vote on the item, on the introductory. All in favor of it, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. Introductory number 203, amending the zoning map by changing the zoning classification of 536 Central Avenue. Public hearing to be held at 5:00 PM after the June 9, 2022 committee meeting. Just want to make a quick comment. You know, I'm actually old enough to remember when there were buildings on that parcel, but I surely don't remember the gas station was there that has the six tanks that we found, that is probably horribly contaminated, that will have to be seriously remediated before we do anything. The notion that there's anybody that wants to take this parcel, assume this risk, and build needed quality affordable housing is commendable, especially working in collaboration with our local faith community. But we ain't voting on that today. We're just voting on changing the zoning classification. So, need a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
And now we vote on it. All in favor of it, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, please say nay. Introductory passes. Introductory number 204, authorizing agreement for hearing officer services. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, need a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
All right. And now we vote on the introductory. All in favor of it, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed to it, please say nay. Introductory passes. With there being nothing else coming before this committee, we now stand adjourned.
All right. At this time, I'm calling Parks and Public Works Committee to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Sure. Councilmember PO.
Here.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Here.
Vice President Lupien.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Introductory number 205, authorizing an agreement for the Rochester Fire Department Needs Assessment Project. Any questions, comments, or concerns? I'm going to guess that Councilmember Lightfoot has something?
Absolutely.
Have at it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted, because I was looking through my answers to the questions in the budget hearing, wasn't sure if I didn't, I missed it or I didn't see it. But we did ask if the potential study would also include looking at the replacement of firehouses, and wasn't sure if that was added to the scope or part of the study.
It is, and I think me and the chief talked about this yesterday, I think. Chief, that possible new firehouses, that is, that is yes.
That will be in the scope of the study.
And I said to him yesterday, me and the chief met yesterday, Councilmember Lightfoot, and you'd be happy to know, I said, you know, Councilmember Lightfoot would love to see at least one new firehouse.
At least one.
And, and he said, yeah, me too. So you got, so now I got to deal with the chief and you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything further? Councilmember Lightfoot? Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it. Second.
Moving in second. Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 206, authorizing an agreement for the Rundell Memorial Library Filtration and Intake Air Upgrades Project. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
Move and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 207, authorizing an mandatory agreement related to the Main Street Streetscape Phase II Project. Questions, comments, or concerns? If not, may I have a motion and a second?
Move.
Second.
Move then, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 208, appropriating funds and authorizing agreements for the 2024 State Touring Route Milling and Resurfacing Project, West Main Street, West Broad Street, Church Lee Place, and South Plymouth Avenue, Forest Street to Genesee Street. Questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Patterson.
Yeah, so it's not the Northeast, but it's my old neighborhood, and it's always nice to see some nice, good work going on on West Main Street.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions, comments, or concerns, may I have a motion and a second?
Come on.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 209 will, and 20, I'm sorry, and 210 will be held in committee per the administration request, but we do have the public comments coming up directly after our next, after this meeting. I believe that should be it for Parks and Public Works. Thank you very much for your time.
At this time, I'll call the Public Safety Committee to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Sure. Councilmember, I'm sorry, President Melendez.
Here.
Vice President Lupien.
Here.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Lightfoot.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember PO.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Introductory number 211, authorizing an agreement for reimbursement of arson task force costs. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Properly moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Introductory number 215, authorizing agreement for the Peacemaker Fellowship Program. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved. Second, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Introductory number 216, authorizing agreement for summer youth programming. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
Very well. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There is nothing else before this committee, so we-
Actually, I just, sorry, I missed my opportunity to ask a question on 215. When do we expect for the Peacemakers staff to be trained and on the street?
Yesterday.
Right. But knowing that it wasn't yesterday, when will it be?
Soon. Vic, Victor, Vic, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Saunders. Mr. Saunders, you want to answer that?
Yes, we're processing currently one of the trainers. One will be going over to California this month, but it's a work here. So, and then we'll have, I think, they will be back in the park this year, starting in the next month.
Okay. And how are we on staffing? Are people applying and we're getting them in?
They are applying. They have the reviews for last week. They're going to be second reviews on the second.
Great to hear. Thank you.
Great. And, and this is just an example. I, I mean, because I just like explaining to people how government works. So when, when you, you know, this was a great idea, this Peacemakers Fellowship, but it's a lot of work to ramp it up. And, you know, this is an example. So I'm, I'm an impatient type of guy, but I'm learning that there's training, there's hiring, there's all that process in order to make it happen, so.
And sometimes the more effective the intervention, the longer it takes.
The longer it takes. So, so this is taking time, but it's better to go slow and get it right than fast and get it, I use, I won't use the other word, fast and get it messed up, right?
All right, thank you. Well, there's nothing else before this committee, so this committee will stand adjourned.
At this time, we'll call the Recreation and Human Service Committee together. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Lightfoot.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Vice President Lupien.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Introductory number 212, authorizing agreement related to software application services. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns?
I do.
Vice President Lupien.
So I know that I've said this before, this, this software is not functioning properly. I'm not sure if this is a matter of customization or how we've been utilizing it. The way that it had been described didn't seem like, it seemed like the company had kind of told us that they'd do one thing, and maybe it wasn't quite the case. So I personally would like to see us go back out to RFP to see if there's a better software out. out there instead of trying to force this one into a box that doesn't really fit. Um, so I'm going to be voting no on this. I just wanted to explain it. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? If none, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Can I get a second? Am I able to second it myself?
Yes, you can.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right.
Nay.
Motion passes.
Yeah, that, I, I think this one is, uh, 2-2.
You can hold it.
So at this time, we're going, because we're, we're missing our chairman, I'm kind of filling in. Uh, so we're, I'm going to ask that we hold this in committee due to the fact that, so will that, that could potentially happen again, may not, but it could. Um, we'll hold this in committee. Thank you. Introductory number 213. Thank you, Councilman Stanley, for catching that. Introductory number 213. Authorizing Funding and Agreements for the 2022 Summer Food Service Program. Any questions, comments, and/or concerns? Councilmember Patterson.
Okay. So we routinely get complaints about the quality of the food kids get in the summer because they're kids and because, you know, it, some of it might not be exactly what they want. So has there been a survey conducted? Do we have the results of the survey from previous years? Are we going to give them something that they eat other than Gogurt?
So how's the food? Do we know?
So there is a consortium of colleagues who work with the food, uh, industry. I'm going to ask Sarah Scott to please come up to the podium and answer that question.
You knew it was coming. I like that.
Yes. So the city participates in a, a food policy, um, consortium that includes the City of Rochester, uh, Common Ground Health, Food Link, RCSD, and some other community organizations to work to try to include the, improve the food quality. So we've done surveying, we've done flavor stations. Uh, I will admit, there's a lot of work left to do, but it is something that we certainly are diligent in addressing.
Okay. Just, and it's not, this isn't really for you or anybody, but in general, I mean, you know, look, we've all been kids and we all know that there are some things you are not going to eat in a group setting. It might not look, you know, whatever. Are we actually talking to the kids to find out, you know, Councilmember Gruber, you know, are we, are we talking to the kids to find out if, you know? It might look good to us old folks, but nah, man, I, you know, if I'm 15, I ain't eating that.
Is that a question for me or for Ms. Scott?
It's for every, anybody in the room who wants to take a shot at it.
I would love to have a conversation with you about that, Councilmember Patterson, but it's a much longer conversation than we have right now. So let's, let's, let's do it some other time. I'd love to hear Sarah's answer.
I can, I can give the short answer. Um, yes, we have staff that work in the rec centers doing, we've done some surveying, we've, we've given feedback to Food Link and the RCSD regarding the meals that students liked, the meals that students did not want to see again. Um, we've also, um, tried to work with our staff so that when staff are giving out food, when staff are around the youth, trying to encourage staff to try and be more positive about the presentation of food, depending on what it may look like. Um, because it does, I, I think a lot of things get a bad rap, but there are meals that students, um, will try and then be surprised by, and then there's foods that we all just don't like, and we're just not going to like them no matter what, no matter how you package it. So I think there's a lot of work to be done, but there has been a lot of, of work done, and I think it's something that we are all dedicated to addressing and figuring out a solution.
All right.
I will say also that the amount of funding that's provided by the federal government for the meals is, is inadequate, in my opinion, and so we are making do with the money that we're given to try to create fresh, healthy meals that are appealing. So a lot of levels of change needed.
Well, that's a, I love that answer, especially when we got, like, money laying around, so.
Councilmember Patterson, I will, I'll just, I'll add one thing only because you, only because you chuckled at her comment. If there was one thing I think we could all do better, it is model behavior for kids. As a former Head Start teacher, I will tell you that when the food came into the classroom, the kids reacted based on the adults' reaction before, the, the kids made up their mind based on the adults' reaction before they even tried the food. And that's something that's in our control as a community.
Uh-huh. And as somebody who's got a nephew who works in a rec center, um, and who also works for the school district and sees them, sees what they eat and what they will and won't eat, a lot of, there's a whole lot of social impact in, in that group dynamic on what some folks will and won't eat, but, you know, but it can't be chicken nuggets and boss sauce every day either. So, I mean, I would encourage as we're thinking about what we're going to, you know, look, they're hungry. They need to eat, but we've all been 15. And we've all been 15 and hungry, but I don't want to look like that hungry kid in the room, so if everybody else is going nah, I'm going nah. So just as we're thinking about this and this process, you know, we have hungry children out there. We've done a good job of feeding kids these last two summers with, um, COVID, and, and I think that helped alleviate some of those issues. We did a good job of feeding families these last two summers with these issues. But I would just hope that as we are getting back to the new normal, that we understand that kids are going to be kids and they're going to act like kids, and for us to expect them to do anything else is irresponsible.
Thank you, Councilmember Patterson, but I, I think I heard very clearly, though, and I agree with everything I've, I've heard so far. Um, we can't expect to have steak on a potato chip budget, right? So we, we, we just have to understand and be realistic about what we're providing our families if we don't even have the resources necessary to give them what they deserve. So we have to be very intentional, I think, about looking at, especially when we're looking at, how can we spend our dollars and our money? Um, our youth, their health, and, and all the disparities around that, right? It's ve, it's very important. Those things, they have so many, they impact us in so many other ways going forward as they grow and, and become, uh, either productive or non-productive citizens within our, our society. So it may seem like a small thing.
Oh, no.
But, you know, what we eat is very important. And so I think going forward, uh, I'll be, be more than, because this leads even to, I've, I've heard, I literally just had a conversation today of somebody who was complaining about the food in our Monroe County jail as well. So, you know, all of these things, I think, kind of, um, align. And so I, I would, uh, offer that we keep this conversation going.
Absolutely.
Uh, any other questions or comments or concerns? If not, I'll entertain.
Okay.
I do.
Yeah.
Councilmember PO, then Vice President Lupien.
Thank you. Are we also looking into, like, dietary restrictions for our children? Is this part of that? If they are gluten allergies or nut allergies or dairy allergies?
All of that is taken into consideration. And so if there's, if kids report allergies, that is known so that if you have a nut allergy, there's food that's, uh, available for you. I know that in the district, they don't prepare food using nuts because of nut allergies. So all of that is taken into consideration for those who prepare the food.
Thank you.
Vice President Lupien.
Yes. There was not a dis, there was not a disclosure or an abstention, uh, for this noted for me, but as an employee of this district, giving money to the district, do I need to abstain on this?
If it is a contract, what's the difference?
Yes.
Any other, uh, questions, comments, and/or concerns?
Move it.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
So does that go back to committee, or that has to be held as well, correct? We'll be holding the food.
No, we're, we're good. We're good on that. 3-3-1.
Okay. All right. Good.
3-3-1.
Thank you. I'm a little rusty on the chair part. Thank you. Um, and you want to feed our babies. All right. Introduction number 2, 2, 214. Appropriating Funds or Authorizing Agreement for Sexual Risk Avoidance Education Grant Program. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Introduction number 217. Authorizing Agreement for the Living Cities Grant Funding Summer Youth Urban Gardening Program. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes.
Uh, Vice President Lupien.
Uh, I know this was not the original use of the Living Cities Grant, but I'm really glad to see, um, the replacement, um, for, um, now I blanked on the original program, um, Rock City Homegrown. But that this is, uh, you know, kind of getting at the same, uh, point, which is, you know, employment for our youth, uh, in urban gardens. So I appreciate this, and it looks like it's going to be a great project.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. There is no other business to come before the recreation.
Need a break? I think we, we, we'll go straight in. What do you normally do? All right, everyone. We do have public hearings, so we're going to move straight into the public hearings.
We'd like to begin the public hearing, so please clear out. Thank you.
All right. With that, the meeting will come to order and the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Lightfoot.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember PO.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice President Lupien.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
So thank you all for joining us for tonight's public hearings. The hearings will be broadcast live on our City Council YouTube channel as well as on City Channel 12. And with that, we'll begin our public hearings.
Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter. Amending the zoning map by changing the zoning classification of 536 Central Avenue. Introductory number 203. Any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Ross T. Ball, and I, uh, general manager of Adflex Corporation on Ormond Street, which is the next street over from Oregon Street. Uh, we received a letter in the mail, I believe it was Tuesday, in regard to this zoning. And this is the first that we've heard of this zoning project. I spoke with all the business owners in the area, and they have not heard anything about this either, and there's strong opposition against this. Um, we, we were just wondering what we need to do as a group to come before you guys and, uh, try to get this stopped. I mean, we're directly across the street from the, um, the homeless shelter, and we went through this before, and there's, there's nothing but trouble in, in the area. I have people sleeping on the lawns, tents in our back lot, people defecating on, on our property, sleeping in, in, in our fence, in our parking lots. People are afraid to come to work, and we've lost customers because of this, because they don't want to come into our neighborhood. We feel that this is going to bring nothing but more problems in our area. I've spoken with, uh, this is probably five years ago when this, this, uh, the homeless shelter opened up. I spoke with the, uh, a group, the committee that is supposed to run, I believe it was the Northeast neighborhood. They assured us that we have police presence, um, the area being cleaned up. I mean, I'm, I'm picking stuff off our fences because of, you know, they're just trash the whole area. I mean, it, it's not that they have a homeless shelter there, it's, it's the repercussions after the fact. There's, there's nobody that is going to help us clean up the area. The homeless shelter, the people themselves, they don't bother us. It's, it's, it's what's brought into the neighborhood. Uh, we have drug deals going on right under the bridge on our corner every single day, and it's, you know, you watch it, and, and nothing's getting done about it. We're just afraid as business owners in the, in the area that, um, you know, it's just going to bring more of this in our area. And we just feel that it's, it shouldn't be zoned as a residential, and it's an industrial area. We don't have, uh, room for expansion that will take away the room for expansion that's, that, that some of the companies may want to have in that area. Right now, we feel like, you know what? If, if this happens, we're just going to pack up and move out of the city. And we don't want to do that, because we, you know, we spent a lot of time, and the company's been there for over 35 years, and so has the other companies that are in the area, been there for quite some time. We are just, you know, surprised that this happened and, and nobody knew about it. And I, I talked to a, a person, I don't know what her name was, I sent her an email. She said that postcards were sent out that nobody seemed to have received. And this letter that we received, it was the first letter that we have gotten, and And this letter that we received, it was the first letter that we have gotten, and it, it seems like the committee has already made a decision, they're gonna do this, and, you know, we have no opportunity to, to fight back. And that's just, you know, where we are right now, and it's gonna bring a lot of bad taste in the neighborhood with all the business owners. And that's all I have really to say right now.
Can I just say something real quick, um, Mr. President, just 'cause it wasn't said, just so folks know, typically in these hearings, we don't speak back, so we're here to listen, so ju, so just know, when you don't hear us responding, that's because that's how the process is.
Thank you for that, yeah.
Man, good evening to everyone. Uh, my name is Franklin Ross. I serve as servant leader pastor of the Peace Missionary Baptist Church, which is the immediate neighbor to this site. We have been diligently working in a collaborative of faith-based initiative collaborative partnership with DePaul and others, and I don't want to put up opposition, but we reached out, we've had meetings with every proprietor, business owner, including Adflex, in our neighborhood, and we did not get any feedback or response. Um, as far as our neighborhood, there are all the issues the gentleman just expressed, they do exist, but we have already, we've been working with House of Mercy as a community, as neighbors, to address those concerns. We have a scheduled mini clean sweep of our neighborhood that we've been planning with House of Mercy, um, and their constituents, to address those issues. Um, I didn't, I'm not just serving in this community, I grew up in this neighborhood, and it has been in need of development, it has been in need of the things that are going on in it for decades, and it is now a blessing to see our community working together. We're grateful for the support of the former mayor, and the current mayor, city council, and, and all the departments that we've met with concerning this project, and if there are any issues in this neighborhood, we will do our due diligence to address them, but this project should not be hindered. We also have interest in expansion for our neighbor businesses in our area. Adflex was given an access, uh, several years back to expand, and another lot was even held because the city was concerned that it would restrict them if they chose to expand even further. So we have been mindful of all our neighbors, but as much as you've done unto the least of these, the Lord says you've done it unto Him, and we just thank you for this time, but I think this is long needed and cannot be left undone.
Okay, if there's no other speakers, that hearing is now adjourned.
The following legislation is being held in committee at the request of the administration, but we will proceed with the public hearing. Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter, amending the official map by abandoning the elbow place right of way. Introductory number two oh nine, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard.
If there are no speakers, that hearing is now adjourned.
The following legislation is being held in committee at the request of the administration, but we will proceed with the public hearing. Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter, amending the official map by abandoning the Selinger Street right of way. Introductory number two ten, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard.
If there are no speakers, that hearing is now adjourned.
Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter, local improvement ordinance, street cleaning, street and sidewalk, snow removal, and hazardous sidewalk repair, commencing July first, two thousand twenty-two, and expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Introductory number two twenty-four, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard.
If there are no speakers, that hearing is now adjourned.
Pursuant to law, public hearing will now be had on the following matter, confirming the assessments, amounts, and charges to be asserted in the annual tax rolls for the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand twenty-two, and expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Introductory number two twenty-five, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard.
If there are no speakers, that hearing is now adjourned. So that concludes our public hearings for tonight. This legislation for these hearings will be voted on at our City Council meeting on Tuesday, June fourteenth, at seven thirty PM, here in City Council Chambers. The meeting will also be streamed live on our YouTube channel, as well as City Council, or City Channel Twelve. With that, we conclude our business tonight, we are adjourned.